Counsel, colleagues, that gets us to the last item on our agenda, which is the discussion, the public testimony on the Land Development Code. We have a little over 50 people that have signed up to speak on this. Our rules have us where the first 20 people speak for three minutes and people after that speak for a minute. I want to call the people in the order that they signed up. Counselor, pull.
Just a quick question. Did we take up 46 and 47 or were they postponed?
They were passed on consent.
They were passed on consent? Forty-six and forty-seven, oh, on housing consent?
No, no, they were...
No, they were all...
On the zoning.
It's different from Jerry's guess.
That's, I'm sorry, zoning consent.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Susan Moffett, why don't you come on up? Gus Penya, is he here? Is Michelle Van Hift here? Why don't you come on down? Three minutes, Miss Moffett.
Thank you. I'm Susan Moffett, speaking about the potential impacts to affordable housing in the memo options. Texas has very few tools to create or maintain affordable housing. Other than financial subsidies, we must rely on trading entitlements for affordable units. This is the basis of our current density bonus programs and the new affordability unlocked initiative. All these programs leverage affordable housing by increasing entitlements, waiving parking requirements or compatibility, allowing greater heights or density, reducing setbacks, et cetera. Unfortunately, these are the same increased entitlements that Options B or C would give away for free citywide. We can already meet and exceed, actually, our numeric housing goals under the current code. The challenge is to get the 60,000 affordable units we need. So if you're voting for B or C, please give clear direction that any substantial increases in entitlements be firmly tied to our affordability goals. Otherwise, you're removing the incentive to use affordability unlocked or the other density bonus programs and potentially throwing a tanker full of gas on the demolition and displacement fire. I know you've heard the ECOM 101 argument about supply and demand, but housing is actually more complicated. Under ECOM 101, any units added to the housing supply should lower demands and costs, so the more units, the better. But in fact, housing markets are actually segmented into discrete submarkets, and the supply-demand ratio in each submarket is largely independent. Unfortunately, high-end units are pretty much all that's being built in Austin today because land and construction prices are so high and because we have a huge influx of newcomers who can afford these prices. I sent you a link with details, but basically if you increase the supply in the high-end submarket, you may eventually see prices drop in that submarket, and you might even see a slight decrease in the next subgroup down. But the effect of added supply diminishes as you go down the submarkets to the point where the difference, or I'm sorry, but the point where the addition of new high-end units makes virtually no difference to the rents or purchase price for lower-cost housing. The market has and always will take care of people with money. But if you give away all these entitlements upfront for hundreds of thousands of new market rate units, you lose what little leverage we have to incentivize affordable units and you increase the pressure to tear down existing market affordable housing, and I really don't think that's what any of you want to do. So please, give clear direction when you vote that any substantial increases in entitlements, including significant parking reductions, be targeted to affordable housing, ideally at 60% MFI or below, but in any case, no greater than 80% MFI. And thank you all for your service and your attention to this.
Thank you. Michelle Van Hift, and then is Julie Fitch here? What about Scott Turner? Why don't you come on down, you'll be next. Three minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm Michelle Van Hift, Vice President of Urban Design for the Downtown Austin Alliance. I am speaking on behalf of the Downtown Austin Alliance. For question one, we support Option A.I. For questions two, three, four, and five, we support Option C. I want to spend most of my time talking about a deeper level of policy direction that is needed for downtown. As you know, downtown is the economic engine of our region. We have to get the code right for downtown, or we risk losing out on tax base that supports critical community needs like public safety, parks, and libraries throughout the city. We recognize how important it is to achieve Imagine Austin goals for mobility corridors and activity centers. Where we zone for housing capacity matters. Downtown is the regional activity center that should accommodate and absorb the most density, jobs, and housing units. We also recognize that downtown requires additional finer-grained policies that will determine its ability to help achieve the goals of the Downtown Austin Plan. Downtown is the single best example of where context-sensitive rules should apply. It should have regulations appropriate for urban sites, not suburban sites. They should not restrict density or lessen entitlements, but they should instead enable a healthy, vibrant, complete neighborhood. But Draft Three of Code Next took us backward. It permitted less development by right, less by mapping, and less via density bonus program. The new code should let downtown be downtown and do its part in creating a compact and connected city. The new code should prioritize competing non-zoning regulations and achieve housing yield. The critical policies in the technical criteria manuals should be evaluated at the same time as the code to fully understand their impact upon development potential. Finally, it is very important to align all of our land use and transportation policies to ensure they achieve the best outcomes, facilitate smooth processes, and ensure no conflicts. We will follow up with each of you regarding more specific recommendations, but we really want to emphasize that downtown is different from any other neighborhood and from any other emerging or established Imagine Austin Regional Activity Center. It has to be given special consideration upfront and should not be an afterthought. We look forward to working with you and the staff leadership team to create the best code for downtown and the entire city, and we appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Timothy Bray here? Why don't you come on down? Mr. Turner?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Turner, I'm a home builder. The city has been waiting seven years and counting now for land use reform. The 10-Year Strategic Housing Blueprint was approved almost exactly two years ago, on April 13th, and there has been little or no progress since in making that reality on the ground. But our city's need for housing is urgent and growing. We need it in every neighborhood, and we need it today, not in another five or seven years. If it takes five more years to realize our land use reform, the Strategic Housing Blueprint would be seven years old and already outdated. Our median home price would increase by about $100,000 at the 25-year average appreciation rate. I'm concerned that historically, planning as a city isn't our strong suit. It moves at a snail's pace. Five-year plans take 10 years, 10-year plans take 20 years. The Flume, the future land use map, has been the plume, or the present land use map, for at least a decade now. And Planning Commissioner Jeff Thompson recently pointed out that at the rate we are going on our neighborhood planning process, we would not be finished until the year 2097, and that's only for 27% of the city. So we don't have a track record that is fantastic when it comes to planning these things out. But I believe, as you and many of the folks in this room do, that we can do better, that we can, despite our difficulties, hit the goals in Imagine Austin. We can hit the goals of the Strategic Housing Blueprint, and we can hit the goals of the ASMP that you were discussing earlier today, but only with a commitment to change the way we have been doing things. We need major changes to the Land Development Code to make it simpler and more predictable. We need major changes to conflicting and outdated criteria manuals, and we need major changes to a planning process that historically isn't equitable or effective. I believe we're ready for the change, I believe we're ready for more housing, and I believe we're ready for Austin to be compact and connected at last. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Eleanor McKinney here? Why don't you come on up, you'll be next. Go ahead, Ms. Bray.
All right, a good saying Howard's Ince likes to say is you can never be neutral on a moving train. We're in that situation right now, that we're going backwards in affordability. If we just take small steps to move forward, we're not actually going to keep moving forward, we're still going to be going backwards with the train. We got to think about this in terms of decades, this is not just going to be a 10-year plan, we're talking about 135,000 units, but I don't think anyone realistically thinks we're going to rewrite the code again in 10 years. So let's think about this 20, 30, 40 years out. This housing is going to last, that we build in the next 10 years, it's going to last for 40 or 50 years. What our city looks like in 50 years is going to depend a lot on what we do now. We talked a lot about, we've talked a lot about like, you know, central, what's built in Austin versus the periphery. We should be more ambitious with what we want to be in Austin. If we had 90% of our growth in the urban core, that would be amazing. It would be amazing for our city, it would be amazing for our planet, for trying to stop greenhouse gas emissions. Another point I wanted to talk about was just with displacement, people need places to move to. You know, we talk about displacement, but most people move in their lives, they get married, divorced, they have kids, you know, they get older, they grow up. So, you know, if you want people to be, communities to sustain themselves, they have to be able to keep living there, they have to be able to move within them when their life changes, you need to be able to have new blood move in as old blood moves out. And just, Austin's character isn't just a single-family housing, it's the people who live here, it's our culture of being welcome and open, it's a city where people, no matter what type of person you are, you can move here and be accepted, even if you aren't welcome elsewhere. To me, that's the core of what our city is. We're open to new ideas, we keep it weird, and weird is always changing, so we got to be open to change. And finally, I think you all, I think you'd be a good city council, but this is really your opportunity to be a great city council. Code Next was barely good city council, if that is, you know, tepid. We need ambition, you know, go for the stars. In 30 years, are people going to say, y'all did a really good thing, or was it like afraid of your own shadow? So don't be afraid of your own shadow, go for the stars. Thanks.
Thank you. After Eleanor McKinney, the next person to speak will be Jay Crossley. Is Jay here? You have two people that donated time to you, Austin Talbert, Austin Talbert here, thank you, and Patricia Schaub, Patricia Schaub here? Okay, sounds good. So you'll have seven minutes. Ms. McKinney, three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name is Eleanor McKinney, I'm a former Code Advisory Group member from District 5 and a landscape architect. I've been living at my residential property on Kenny Avenue for 37 years, and have given back to the city not only as a landscape architect on City Hall, but also as a Parks Board Member, Design Commission Member, and Chair Greenery Advisory Group, and finally, on the Code Advisory Group for a total of over 19 years of service. I'm here today in support of the use of criteria that recognizes unique circumstances in the text and mapping of the Land Development Code rewrite in terms of compatibility. I support key portions of former Planning Commissioner Trinity White's review of the Planning Commission recommendations regarding Code Next, the need for small-area transitions on planning, and attendant staff and consultant resources to accomplish this in a timely manner, the need for a testing period to see what's working and what is not, and the need for criteria that considers the circumstances specifically in regards to orientation of blocks relative to the corridor, does a block run parallel, perpendicular, at an angle, and residential blocks cited by MS or MU's on lots. All sites are not the same in all districts across town. There are nuanced conditions which can be more thoughtfully approached at a district, small-area-plan level, with council members who understand their district. At the same time, there are similar situations in many districts that might benefit from the greater understanding of the whole. What I have up there on the screen is my residential lot on Kenny Avenue that's in blue, that's been protected by current compatibility standards since 1983. The commercial property is in orange. As you can see, not only does the commercial back up to my residential lot, but also a butt's aside. Any commercial or mixed-use development will have a greater negative impact on the side than on the rear. On the side, any redevelopment will be looming over my property as shown in the following slides. If you could do the next one, sir. This is actually current zoning, but go to the next one, please. Placing an 85-foot-tall building would negatively impact not only the use of my property, but the property value as well for any potential resale. We need to be mindful of how much height we are giving away as an increased entitlement for how much affordable housing. I'm all in favor of affordable housing, but you know, you need to look at its impacts everywhere. There are similar situations on properties where the streets come in at an angle on Burnett Road, on Airport Boulevard, and Caesar Chavez. So the situation is not unique to my property or district. The staff mentioned split zoning of properties at the council work session, where the property is zoned for greater density along the corridor and split to less dense zone at the back of the property. I think this might be a valid approach to mitigate the impact, and please consider directing staff to develop criteria that considers the circumstances in association with district-level planning for mapping and compatibility.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Crossley, you have seven minutes. Is Barbara MacArthur here?
Yes.
Why don't you come on up, you'll speak at this podium. Mr. Crossley, seven minutes.
Hi, my name is Jay Blazett Crossley, I live in D7 in a traditional 700-square-foot duplex with my wife and my son. And I will note that I'm the Chair of the Pedestrian Advisory Council, and the Pedestrian Advisory Council did send you guys a recommendation, asking that you ask the city manager to do Option 3 on all the things, but the rest of this talking is me, and I'm not representing the Pedestrian Advisory Council. So I work for a nonprofit called Farming City, and we have this project on regional, sustainable regional growth for Texas metro regions, and we've been focused on Austin for the last two years. And the key is that it's, we think the two key things about sustainability for Texas metro regions is the Land Development Code and the Regional Transportation Plan. And I think we have a chance this year to get both of those things right, to literally help save the world. And so I wanted to give you guys some context to think about what we're talking about here, about population growth. You know, this is from the state demographer, this is who's coming. You know, I did this during previous rounds, it was 2018 to 2027. We have a lot of people coming to Austin, and a lot of people of different races. We're mostly people of color who are coming to the region. But it's a whole lot, and we're going to grow by 2 million people by 2040 or so. There, you know, there's been this sort of like, could we stop growth, you know, could we, could we, could we just stay how we are? And we actually have numbers on what that would mean. So here, on the right, are the people that would not be allowed to live in Austin, in the region, if we could somehow stop growth. And there's the story of the Californians, the swarm of Californians that are ruining our city. Way more people come to Travis County from Harris County than California, than the entire state of California. Our net California for over five years was 930 people. So this isn't, that's a false narrative. There are some Californians who are coming, and we should welcome them like any other humans. But this isn't, most of our growth is people being born here and people moving from the rest of Texas. And this growth, we're not special. The Austin region is growing somewhat fast, but it's not growing much faster than the world urban population. And the city of Austin recently has been growing slower than the world urban population. And over the last several years, and that's almost directly meant the city growing slower and more growth out in the sprawl around us. And if you look at affordability, there's a lot of myths about driving until you qualify, and the idea that we need to build some transit out in Maynor so that people can afford, and it's just not true. And if you look at actual just housing price, it's still more affordable to live in the city of Austin than in Maynor. And if you count transportation, housing and transportation together, the affordable options for people in our region are still in the city of Austin, and we need to provide those affordable options for people here. If you look at the population of people living in poverty, the vast majority of people living in poverty in our region are in the city of Austin, and we need to be building housing for them here. And the different, people of different races have different experiences of housing type and ownership, and we need to be aware of that. And we do things like homestead exemptions that preference homeownership. That means we're not preferencing multifamily living, and we're not, and that there's different, disparate impacts of those kind of policies on people by race. And so this, the Austin region, we did a thing to divide it up by urban, suburban, rural, and then superurban. And the key is that VMT is vehicle miles traveled, and GHT is greenhouse gases from transportation. And basically, if you tell me where you live, I can tell you how much all your neighbors drive on average, and how much carbon emissions they're creating. And so this is the whole Austin region divided up that way. And we know from various surveys that about half of people wish they could live in a big house with a big yard, even if they have to drive everywhere. About a half of people wish they could live somewhere where they could walk to stuff, even if it's a smaller unit. But currently, the people who want to walk to stuff aren't getting what they want. And about 1.5 million people in our region live in suburban or rural car-dependent places, and .5 million or so kind of live in urban places. And this is our official regional plan. The Campo Growth Forecast is that we will go from this to that. This represents, I think, 350 square miles of land converted from rural to suburban, and going to 3 million people living in car-dependent places. This is a nightmare. This is an environmental nightmare, a traffic nightmare, a traffic crash nightmare, and an affordability nightmare. And this is our official, this is what the region thinks is going to happen, and so we should change this. This is the J Plan, where just every single tract grows at the same percentage as the region. This would be an equitable growth method, it's just everywhere, every neighborhood, every place there are people, we should put some more people there. And that's what this would look like, it would achieve the goal of half the people who want walkable neighborhoods could have them. So I think this should be the regional goal, but what you do here will have a huge impact on this. One key note is that the demographer seems to have gotten something wrong, and the urban counties of Texas have all grown faster than the demographer thought in 2010, and that this impacts how much money Travis County and City of Austin are getting in terms of tech thought projects, in terms of Campo spending. And it's too weird, but the new draft regional growth forecast presented at the TAC at Campo in November show a radical change in our thinking about the future, and is a good change. And instead of adding a whole 'nother million people to sprawl in Williamson County, it's reducing that almost in half, and saying we probably will have more people coming to Travis County. This will dramatically impact whether or not you can build the orange and blue line, and get the federal money, it'll dramatically impact traffic. The new scenario on the right is dramatically better in terms of traffic crashes and the environment and everything. So, and so we're talking about housing units. And it looks like, this is the ACS data on housing units, back in 2009, we went from having more units in the city of Austin than the rest of the region to less. And this is really the question that you are deciding, is the future of this. And there are some discussions about like, your goal, the strategic housing thing. The last two years have not been growing too fast, that's all my time, but you need a lot more housing units. Impervious surface, Code Next would be a lot better on impervious surface. Parking requirements are horrible, please stop. And that streets, narrow streets are safer when there are cars parked on it, and that's, NACTO knows that, so please, stop doing parking requirements, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would you go ahead and send the council members a copy of your deck? Thank you. Before Ms. MacArthur speaks, is Chip Harris here? Why don't you come on down? All right, Ms. MacArthur, you have three minutes.
Hi, I just want to thank you for your concern about the difficulties and lower profits the developers and land speculators are making because of the impediments of unit limits, use designations, impervious cover, parking requirements, trees, technical criterion menus, and compatibility. It's just so difficult that no one is actually developing any property here. So what can we do to help them? What is the single policy we can pursue the most aggressively? Can we look at public land with good access to transportation amenities? Can we look at underused commercial property? Can we look at the acres of warehouse office parks near transit land? No. The single most important policy we can pursue is to land a lot of free entitlements to land in mixed-income neighborhoods that were built with modest housing, without deed restrictions, and also remove the parking requirements. And make sure the buzzword you use while you do this are affordability, sustainability, and opportunity. But we already did this experiment in Austin, we did it in the Chestnut neighborhood, and in 10 years, the black population decreased 66%, the Latino population decreased 33%, and the white population increased 442%. So you increase density in housing, but what cost? The policy choices you are making are about economic development and tax revenue, not affordable housing or stable communities. Giving away rather than leveraging entitlement stands in the way of any motivation to build affordable housing. 100% of the observational, not theoretical, studies on the impact of upzoning on affordability have shown that it simply doesn't work. The result of liberalizing zoning is more luxury housing and more profits for landlords and developers. Increasing entitlements create increased developer and speculative profit, increased demolition, increased displacement, increased property taxes for those who try to remain. Is it good policy, to the view of the city, our communities, our homes, our environment as a tabula rasa, to experiment with while at the same time you take away our right to have a say, or to stay?
Thank you. Is Jeffrey Twabba here? Why don't you come on down? Mr. Harris, you have three minutes.
Mayor, council members, my name is Chip Harris. Here's a perspective from the community. We want a process that leads to a community conversation around the city manager's questions and the questions that underlie his questions. We don't want council answers that preempt that conversation. We want to retain the right to provide real input into zoning decisions, mapping, that will affect our neighborhoods and our neighbors' ability to stay in their homes. We don't want the city to present us with a completed code and map. We want smart decisions about housing capacity and housing demand based on facts and expert demographic opinions. We don't want to preload decades' worth of entitlements under the presumption that the city cannot accelerate the creation of housing capacity and housing organically with a new code and an improved land development process, or that this is the last opportunity to extend entitlements to create capacity. We don't want housing capacity decision-making that ignores the risk that development will displace residents, especially low-income families. We want smart decisions that calibrate parking, compatibility, and the location of commercial uses in the core, in the conditions to the ground, on the ground. We want a code that allows for context-specific decision-making that involves the local community. We want, we don't want across-the-board onsite parking reductions without a system in place that solves the parking demand rather than merely relocates the parking demand. We want to locate new housing density and housing types using corridor and small-area planning processes so that we can tailor land use and transportation elements to individual corridors and transit nodes, and avoid unintended consequences such as displacement, traffic congestion, and pedestrian safety issues. We don't want off-the-shelf prescriptions that treat all corridors and the areas surrounding them as the same. Please do not treat this process like a job candidate search where only one finalist is presented, effectively removing the public from the process. We're upset with the legislature and with good cause, because they are acting unilaterally, but then we copy their style and MO. If we're confident we're really representing our constituents and not simply taking advantage of our win at the polls, then let us truly honor democracy and engage the community in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, it looks like Speaker Number 7, Timothy Bray, has had the chance to speak. I just pointed out to the clerk on the list. Before Mr. Twabba talks, is Curtis Rogers here? Why don't you come on down, you'll have three minutes, Mr. Twabba.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council for allowing me this opportunity to testify. My name is Jeffrey Twabba, and I'm here on behalf of the Real Estate Council of Austin. RICA's membership includes more than 1,700 engineers, attorneys, architects, and real estate developers who work mostly in small businesses based here in Austin and serves as experts in the commercial real estate industry. Our members' companies also include thousands of local residents who work every day on some of the issues we're here today to discuss. First, we would like to applaud City Manager Spencer Kronk for beginning the process the right way and working to build consensus before pen is put to paper. RICA is ready to collaborate with the city and community leaders to get a good solution for the city of Austin. Specifically, RICA is committed to a more affordable and dynamic Austin, and we view this Land Development Code rewrite as an essential next step towards reaching those goals. The new Land Development- The new land development code should be clear to everyone. It should prepare our city to meet our needs in the future, and it should take significant steps to address Austin's high cost of living and our mobility challenges while acknowledging the fact that we will continue to grow. The new land development code should also encourage additional strategically-located housing supply across product type and price point as the key to solving our city's ongoing affordability crisis. We'd like to speak briefly on a few policy questions proposed by the city manager. RICA strongly believes an entirely new land development code needs to be drafted, and it's crucial that the process take place concurrently with the production of the zoning map. Unless our policymakers and the community understand how the code and map work together, there can be no comprehensive understanding of the impacts resulting from a proposed land development code revision. The new land development code should also provide even greater housing capacity than the number of housing units that were proposed in the third and final draft of Code Next. We strongly believe that the key housing affordability is increased, housing capacity, and diversity of housing types. We must provide for missing middle housing. We need duplexes, triplexes, ADUs, and townhomes for our working families, recent college graduates, empty nesters, and retirees, and we must accept the reality that the traditional single-family home is not for everyone. We also believe that the compatibility standards under the current land development code create the most significant single barrier to meeting the affordability goals outlined in Imagine Austin. This is a longstanding and complicated policy issue that needs to be carefully addressed, and we are willing to provide our expertise in this area. At the end of the day, our community deserves a new land development code that is comprehensive, clear, and coordinated. RICA stands at the ready to offer our expertise in the spirit of arriving at a land development code that's good for the future of Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Robert Foster here? Why don't you come on down, you'll have three minutes. Mr. Curtis, Mr. Rogers, sorry.
Thank you for the time. My name is Curtis Rogers. I'm a resident of District Three, an alternate member on the Bicycle Advisory Council, speaking tonight as a private citizen. I appreciate the chance to speak on the topic of parking regulations. Minimum parking requirements are a disaster for both the environment and affordability in Austin. On the environmental side, abundant parking leads to more car ownership and more miles driven per person. A well-known transportation planner recently said that minimum parking requirements are more effective climate denialism than anything the Koch brothers are doing. Putting the irrational fears of the privileged ahead of the needs of everyone, end quote. If we believe in climate change and we care about air quality, mandatory parking does not have a place here. On affordability, forcing a builder to add unnecessary parking not only adds to the construction costs, which will later be passed to the tenant, but it also tells the builder to only create housing for people who can afford cars. When builders have to add expensive space to store cars, they have to make up the cost by adding more amenities, more square footage, and end up only creating expensive housing. Removing parking minimums is not a silver bullet for these two complex issues, but it is a giant leap in the right direction for Austin. I urge you to choose the option to end required parking, just like current regulations are for downtown Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. After Robert Foster talks, the next speaker is going to be Matt Armstrong. Is Matt Armstrong here?
Thank you.
Hang on a second. Matt Armstrong? No? What about Chris? I know I butchered that. Is David Conley here? You have time donated from David Conley. Is he here? Don't see him. What about Colin Brandenburg? Okay, so you'll have five minutes when you come up. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak once again. As Councilmember Harper Madison pointed out earlier today, our current code is broken. It only allows for us to take a small bungalow, the traditional form that was built in the '30s, '40s, and '50s, and replace it with a giant mansion. A mansion that is way out of reach of many of us Austinites, definitely many of us that aren't working in the tech or other high-paid industries here. And the problem is, is this has been going on for decades now, and the longer we delay in rewriting the land development code, we're just going to see whole neighborhoods, bungalows just torn down and replaced with 3,000-square-foot mansions that go for $250 a square foot at minimum. That's three-quarters of a million dollars. There are 10 positions at all of ACC where I work that could afford that. And so unless you're in the top levels of our management, we're getting priced out of Austin. The people that are teaching the students, the people that are building the houses, the people that are serving us food, the current land development code isn't doing anything for us, and it's hurting us immensely. So I want to keep this brief, but I just want to say, please don't shy away from the difficult task. Pass an ambitious land development code, and pass one that has a strong affordable density bonus program. That's one of the few tools we have here, and we had some great work on the original Code Next, and so, continue on in that hard work, and let's pass a code that will actually work for the people in Austin that aren't rich. Thank you.
Thank you. After Chris, the speaker will be Craig Nazar. You have five minutes.
Thank you, I have a presentation. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to briefly touch on a couple aspects of land use regarding the land development code. I'm Kaz Wojtewicz, D-10 resident. Today, I'm speaking for myself. We need more housing for more people. We're in the middle of a housing crisis. Let me restate that to drive home the point. We're in the middle of a housing crisis. We need more housing. We need more public housing and more market-rate housing. We need diversity of housing types and uses everywhere. Please give the city manager a clear, unqualified mandate. Eliminate exclusionary zoning. The status quo is broken. A piecemeal approach to trading entitlements is not working. Almost a year ago, I came to council along with other housing advocates to support a $300 million affordable housing bond. Today, I'm here to ask you to upzone central Austin. We need more housing and services near good schools, high-opportunity areas, near transit, jobs, and other amenities. I'm going to talk about an additional reason to upzone Austin, the fiscal case. It's far more efficient to provide necessary public services to urban-style development. Further upzoning is fiscally costless, and the fiscal impact to the budget is a net positive. As was mentioned earlier today, the city is considering more fire stations because of wildfire concerns. It's incredibly difficult and expensive to provide the utilities for suburban development. We need much more development in the city core. Again, upzoning central Austin will expand our tax base. This is a map of property and sales tax per acre. It's a very stark contrast with the rest of the county. As was mentioned earlier, we're the economic engine of not only the region, but also the state. Compare the value per acre of the Amlee Downtown residential development to a mixed-use Galleria. So we've got $30.2 million per acre at the Amlee Downtown at 2014 rates versus $1.2 million per acre at the Galleria and the B Caves. So in other words, 7.2 acres of Amlee equals 174 acres of the B Caves-Galleria. It's almost budget season. The more you upzone central Austin, not just downtown, the easier the job of your predecessors will be in the years to come with an expanded tax base. Look at the sprawl we currently have. It's fiscally unsustainable, in addition to being environmentally damaging. Please leave your predecessors and the next generation with a better fiscal outlook. As many of y'all have stated, the city funds important, necessary services. Let's expand that tax base. Let's expand those services. This is one of Jay's Farm and City maps. It's pretty clear. This is what the current code is. Apartments are banned in a lot of the city. It's shameful. But there's another reason. There's an incredible amount of discussion regarding missing middle. I'd like to focus on this for a second. This is a Boston triple-decker. It's a well-loved type of house in Boston, the type of house used to be allowed by right in Boston and in Austin before exclusionary zoning was established. You should aim to allow this type of housing by right in all of central Austin. This housing, for example, is 3,894 square feet with an average height of 30 feet. This is what it looks to allow multi-generation housing. Simple, basic, easy to build. More housing is a community benefit. There's no parking there, but that's okay. This is a Chicago three-flat. This should also be allowed. And then here's a six-unit, three-story brownstone. Again, this is the type of housing that should be allowed by right near transit, jobs, in high-opportunity areas, and near schools. Should this six-unit, three-story brownstone really be illegal to build in Hyde Park, Pemberton Heights, or Allendale? I don't think so. In conclusion, upzone central Austin. We need more housing and services near good schools, high-opportunity areas, near transit, jobs, and other amenities. Thank you.
Would you also send a copy of that deck to the council members? Okay. After Mr. Nazar speaks, is Kevin Quist here? Why don't you come on up, you'll have three minutes. Sir.
Hello. Thank you, Austin City Council, for sitting here and listening to so much material today. It's very impressive that you listen to this, and I think it's great. I'm a musician. I grew up in a family of lawyers. The only thing I can think about, really, to talk about is my own experience here. I grew up in a family of lawyers, but when I announced I'd be a musician, I was sort of actually physically thrown out. I was lucky enough to get a very good undergraduate education, extremely lucky to get that. And then I moved to New York City, where I made my life as a musician, as a performing pianist. The first year in New York City, I lived on $88 a week. I did not legally pay taxes. When you talk about affordability, sometimes I wonder what you're talking about. I really don't know, because what is affordability? Now, I teach a classroom of people at ACC like me. They can't afford to go Austin City Limits, none of it. They do nothing in South by Southwest, except maybe play at a free party. But these are good musicians, these are wonderful kids, and you've heard them all play, and you'll hear them more. So, I think about it. In New York City, they did rent control. Well, you show me a rent-controlled apartment, and I'll show you a sub-sub-sub-sublet. When I moved out of New York City, my apartment, I had a great apartment, I was very lucky to get it, and I didn't have any moving costs. They said, "How am I going to move out?" And someone said, "Well, you're going to charge key money." Key money? In 1981, what you do is, I'm leaving this great apartment. If you want me to move out so you can move in, you're going to pay me $1,000, and they did, without blinking an eyelash. That still shocks me. So what can you do about affordability? I'm not sure, and I wish you well, and I support anything you do. But what saved my life? A park. In New York City, I lived on the tip of Manhattan Island, and there was Inwood Hill Park. It's a wild park in Manhattan. We need more parks. Okay, and what do my students worry about most? They struggle, they do their thing, they come to class, man, they study. I love these students. I love ACC. I love teaching there. It is such a privilege to do that. What are they worried about? They're worried about climate change. Now let me tell you something. When that rain came, that rain bomb came last Saturday, I was unlucky enough to have to walk from Parkfield to I-35, two blocks. I had my phone, it starts blinking, they say, you know, "We have a flood warning." We had a rainfall rate of three inches per hour. I saw the flooding on Breaker.
You can finish your thought.
Yes. My thought is this: We need to protect our impervious cover. We need to do better. So that's my thoughts about a new code. I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Quist, you're going to be our last speaker, three minutes. Is Seth LaRue here?
He is not.
He is not. What about Eli Pearl? Why don't you come on up, you're going to have one minute. Go ahead, Mr. Quist.
Hello, council. I'm sure that by now you all have heard every argument for and against land use. The narratives on both sides have been thoroughly explained. There really isn't much left to be heard, which means that this public testimony is more about showing up and displaying your commitment, which is why I am not studying for my wastewater engineering test tomorrow. I'm an urbanist. I believe that entirely walkable cities are the most ideal way to design a city. They're highly equitable, because transportation doesn't cost a dime when you just need your feet. And they're also highly sustainable. If you need proof, which I'm sure you don't, but again, this is about showing up. Researchers have found that Estonians annually use about 75,000 megajoules of energy per person on transportation. On the other hand, Toronto, a city where three flats are the dominant housing type, only uses 30,000 per person. You can guess how much Austin uses per person. Walkable cities also have an efficient public transit system, complete with dedicated lanes and connected routes. Frequent, cheap, and reliable transit is too good of a deal for us to turn down, and humans around the globe are hardwired to use it. But before we set about building a great public transit system here in Austin, let's not forget the number-one rule of transit planning: Put people near the stations. As Austin continually grows, the need for a top-notch transit system will as well. And when we finally pass Project Connect, the land use must be there to match it. This is all basic logic, and we, as a community, understand it. When I talk to my friends about urban planning, they don't look at me like I'm a wacko. They understand it intuitively. They understand that compact and connected is the best way to grow. So with that in mind, Delia Garza, Greg Cassar, Jimmy Flanagan, Natasha Harper-Madison, Pio Renteria, and Kitchen, please lead the charge. Allow fourplexes by right on every plot of land in central Austin. Abolish parking minimums. Pass Project Connect in 2020. We have your backs, and so too does logical urban planning. I want to thank you all for your attention, and I sincerely hope that this is the last time I'm up on a podium like this. We know what a good city looks like. It's time to do it.
Thank you. After Mr. Pearl speaks, the next speaker would be Jordan McGee. Is Jordan McGee here?
She is actually sick.
She is?
She's sick.
She's gone.
Yeah.
Hope she feels better. Is Mark Seeger here? Okay, you'll be at this podium. You have one minute.
Good evening. My name is Eliezo Pearl. I am a first-year undergraduate at UT. Firstly, I want to thank all of you again for taking the time to listen to all of us about what you have undoubtedly heard many, 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 many times before. And again, as Kevin Quist said, the main reason I'm up here is mainly to demonstrate my commitment to this great city of Austin. I just wanted to give a quick little anecdote about my trip to Houston for spring break, which was kind of unconventional. I went without a car, and I kind of hopped between different hostels and motels, but I guess the core element of it was that I did not have a car to get around. From what I've seen, Houston was pretty sprawled out. It was very hard to get around, and what I guess what I'm trying to say is that Austin's at a crossroads in terms of either we keep our land code antiquated and restrictive, or we make it more accessible to people who need it. And, yeah, out of every city in Texas, I think Austin is by far the best, and I really think we should keep it that way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. After Mr. Seeger speaks, David Whitworth would be the next speaker. Is he here? David Whitworth? Why don't you come on down so you can start? Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you, mayor and council members, for your service to the City of Austin. My name is Mark Seeger. I live in the Judges Hill residential area. We are bounded by 15th Street, North Lamar, and Martin Luther King. To make this brief, I would like to just say that several speakers have already said one size does not fit all. That is certainly true for the residential area that I live in. If you were to adopt a half a mile, we would have no more single-family residents in our neighborhood. If you were to adopt a quarter of a mile, we would have three single-family residents in our neighborhood. That's if you were to roll back all of those requirements. The other thing I would like to point out is we have 23 historic homes that could be impacted, and so we would like for you to consider context. The solution I bring to you is the Downtown Austin Plan, all of the stakeholders, including...
Can finish your thought. Thank you. Okay. Is, after Mr. Whitworth speaks, is Robert Dahl here? Robert Dahl? Why don't you come on down? You have time donated by Josiah Stevenson. Is he here? Okay, so you'll have two minutes. Why don't you stand down here at the podium? Go ahead and start, sir. You have one minute.
Good evening, council. My name is David Whitworth. I'm an infill builder here in Austin. I'm also the vice president of the Austin Infill Coalition. And as we go into this new code revision, I think of something my wife tells me from one of her design professors at University of Arizona, and she said, "If you want more of something, make it easier." And that really speaks to me here in Austin. We need to make housing that we want easier and not get caught up in this argument of giving something away for free without... of giving something away for free without exacting a price. The, the, I really think that if y'all make any wrong, this is gonna be a very complicated and difficult task. If you make some wrong decisions trying to do the right thing, I really think that you will be vindicated in the long run. If, is that three minutes?
It's one minute now.
If you, oh, I wanna get one minute.
That's right, so you can finish your thought.
I just wanna say, my, my, to finish my thought, it's so hard to build housing in Austin that even an engineer, planning commissioner, recently had his flag lot subdivision not approved. And there's no luck for the rest of us until y'all change the code, thank you.
Is Tina Barrett here? Why don't you come on down to this podium? And is Greg Anderson here? Greg Anderson? No? What about Liza Wimberly? Why don't you stand behind this gentleman here, so you can move up to that podium? Go ahead, sir, you have one minute.
All right, I have, I have two minutes, right?
Two minutes, because you have time donated, that's correct, two minutes.
My name is Robert Dahl, I live in Allendale, and I've lived there since 2007. I want to thank you all for having me here. I was first a renter in Allendale for a couple of years, and then for the past decade as a homeowner. I live six houses away from Burnett Road, on one of the corridors. I received my PhD from UC Berkeley in 2001, and I've been teaching environmental science and sustainability for almost twenty years. I've held full-time academic and teaching and research positions at UC Berkeley, Texas A&amp;M, and the University of Texas at Austin. I'm currently a Senior Research Fellow in the Environmental Science Institute at UT. I'm a paleoecologist by training, but much of my recent research has been in the area of climate change. Specifically, the carbon cycle and the effects of converting forests and natural ecosystems to agricultural and urban land uses. Um, I want to tell you a very brief story, I thought I'd have more time, about the most affordable rental house in Austin. Having, I mean, not in Austin, in Allendale, excuse me. I, my first interaction in Allendale in 2009 was a neighbor trying to get me to sign a petition to prevent the dividing of a, of a lot near me. I refused to sign this petition, and I told my neighbor that I was a supporter of urban infill and newer urbanist ideals, primarily for environmental reasons, but also because more housing usually means more affordability. My own time in Allendale was almost cut short too, because of the growing Austin affordability crisis and my own family situation. After buying the Allendale house in 2009 with my former partner, I soon became a single dad. I could barely afford my mortgage and taxes in Allendale, and that situation became worse as taxes rose. So I decided to put my environmental sustainability ideals where my mouth is, and I decided to build an ADU. I built an accessory dwelling unit in Allendale, because my lot is huge, it's over a third of an acre.
You can finish your thought.
This is the most affordable house, I can't rent this house to my lotmates, but I share expenses. This house rents, this, the shared expense portion is fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. There is not a single, single-family home in Allendale that goes for under that price.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Shrikar Naluri here? Why don't you stand behind this person at, at this podium? And is Ryan Nill here? Why don't you come on down and stand behind her? You have some time donated by Daniel Hardisty Lewis, and time donated by Robert Burns. Is Robert Burns here? Okay, so you'll have three minutes when your time goes. You'd stand behind her, thank you. Go ahead. You have one, you have one minute.
Am I first?
I think so.
Doesn't matter, oh.
Did I, did I have a background?
It's interchangeable, it's either way.
All right, go ahead and tell me your name.
I'll go first, okay. Hi, my name is Lisa Wimberly, I live in Rosedale. I live in a single-family home on a large lot, my home is zoned SF2, and I'm surrounded by single-family homes on large lots that are zoned SF2 or SF3. I'm only a few blocks from the 803 bus stop, and I live five miles from downtown. Lots in my neighborhood, as they are in much of urban, urban, Austin's urban core, are the first barrier to housing affordability. The empty lots in my neighborhood sell for about a half a million dollars. The only way to make this really expensive land more accessible to more people is to allow them to share this land, the cost of this land. Building triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, and rowhouses, missing middle housing, is the only way to move forward with our most pressing problems. Missing middle housing provides neighborhood-scale density at lower land costs and many environmental benefits, lower energy costs, lower water use, and support for mass transit. Contrary to the fears expressed by some longtime residents in central Austin, this is not about taking single-family homes away. This is about giving opportunity for more people to live near transit, jobs, and other amenities offered by our city. This is an opportunity for Austin to be more inclusive and more environmentally conscious.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barrett, you're gonna speak next. Is, uh, Mike Gors here, Gorsay? Why don't you come on down, and you can get in line? Go ahead, Ms. Barrett.
Hi, my name is Tina Barrett, I live in Rosedale and have lived there for twenty years. I wrote something for three minutes, so I'm gonna try just to read the end of it. A hundred years ago, in a major advance for human dignity, the Supreme Court struck down a racial zoning law in Louisville, Kentucky that prohibited non-whites from moving into homes in majority-white areas. But this hardly ended racial discrimination in housing, as whites adopted biased policies like economic zoning that banned apartment buildings in areas designated for single-family homes, often adding minimum lot-size requirements too. In fact, just nine years later, in a 1926 Supreme Court decision about zoning in a suburb of Cleveland, the court reasoned that an apartment house can be, quote, "a mere parasite constructed in order to take advantage of open spaces and attractive surroundings created by the residential character of the district," end quote. My hope is that in 2019, Austin City Council will realize that neighborhood character is really just a relic codeword of that age, and meant to keep the poor away from the privileged. We have to do better than this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Shrikar Naluri is to speak, and in the meantime, is, is Sarah Cook here? Sarah Cook? You, why don't you come down and stand behind this gentleman? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Shrikar Naluri, I'm a student at UT Austin. I've had the great privilege of, like, growing up in Texas and around the Austin area. And I would like you to allow us living in Austin to have the choice of what many people before me have called missing middle housing. Basically, I think like when people talk about buzzwords like density, like, they think either it has to be like downtown skyscrapers or west campus, like twenty-five-story apartment buildings, which we need in some places, or like just some huge, like, two-thousand-square-foot house, but like, so I think having these duplexes and fourplexes are very nice. And to use an example of another capital city, a lot of when my family moved to America, a lot of my uncles and cousins moved to Washington DC, which is another capital city, and like, kind of comparable to Austin in many ways. And there, a lot of the favorite neighborhoods there, like Capitol Hill, are all duplexes or fourplexes, like townhouses and rowhouses. And I just wanna say, like, people love those neighborhoods, and I hope we have the choice to have those.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Nill, you're gonna have three minutes to be able to speak. Is Lori Wedlec here? Why don't you come on down and stand at this podium? Okay? That'd be fine. Sarah, you'll have two minutes then. That, is Betsy Klubine here? Why don't you stand at this podium? Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Ryan Nill. I'm with the Austin Cooperative Business Association, and I've lived in housing cooperatives for more than ten years now. Um, a cooperative is a form of democratically managed housing, democratically managed by its tenants. Um, and there's only about eight hundred people living in co-ops in Austin right now. So they're quite difficult to build, like, many missing middle houses, we often occupy missing middle houses. Um, but we also get confused for fraternities and dorms and halfway homes, so it can be difficult to exist as a co-op in Austin. Co-ops, by creating community, create a great economic benefit. It's, I like to say it's kind of an in-between model between homeownership and renting. You get the benefits of homeownership of, you know, being able to choose what you do with your property, and where to spend your money, and you get the drawbacks of being responsible for your property and having to decide what to do with it. Um, I live in co-ops because I think, the first reason is primarily because of community. I really was drawn to something that felt like my extended family in, in Mexicali. I've got like nine uncles and aunts and thirty cousins, and visiting the grandparents was a lot like visiting my first co-op. But I really stuck around for the economic benefits, and the prices are kind of fantastic. I live in an apartment building off of North, uh, North Lamar and Anderson. It's seven hundred square feet, we pay nine hundred dollars a month. A hundred and fifty of that is food and utilities. I don't have to drive to the grocery store. Someone does that for me. Um, and, you know, having access to cooperative housing as a college student was a great education in the skills of homeownership, and kind of living in community. And I know the, my three supporters who gave me time, or I guess two, they're from the college co-ops, and I know they highly value education and serving students. Um, co-ops are really good at serving populations that really need it. At my cooperative, La Reunion, we work with nonprofits, most notably Caritas, who's helped us house two homeless veterans that are, have been successfully and thriving in La Reunion for over a year each. Um, and college houses recently started a partnership with Serve Austin to help house AmeriCorps volunteers. So like I said, they're kind of like missing middle, they're very difficult to build. And there is definitely a policy solution in the Austin Housing Blueprint, which is to relax density restrictions, occupancy limits, and parking specifically for co-ops. Um, and as you've heard, like, that is definitely something we should do across the board. But we should do that particularly for co-ops in addition. Um, and the blueprint also calls for making a specific zoning designation for cooperatives, so we don't get confused with some of these less popular uses that we often get, you know, included in collateral damage for. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alicia Weigl, why don't you, you're gonna be on deck. You have time donated by Kyle Hoskins, and also by David Glenn. Okay, so when you get called, you'll have three minutes. But the next speaker is Mike Gors. Take your time.
Thank you Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council. I wanted to say and point out that there are a lot of different people in Austin who are in different situations and need different options. There are people who have been happily married for thirty years and want to stay right where they are for as long as they live. And there are also people like my mom, who, for instance, in her case, she was married for twenty-five years to my stepfather, and then he decided that he wanted a divorce, which to her was completely unexpected, and the house needed to be sold, and she needed to move. And, to be clear, she lives in Massachusetts, but I'm sure that there are people in Austin in a, in a similar situation. And there are also young people who are just starting out, who need to find housing. And my point is that people don't just need the ability to stay, people also need the ability to move and to find housing. And there isn't enough housing in the places where people want to live, and in the places that are relatively walkable and relatively well-served by transit. We need more choices, we need more cooperatives, we need more missing middle housing. We need to liberalize our code. The city has been changing, and the code needs to be organic, just as the city is. It shouldn't necessarily be static, just in state, and we shouldn't only have something just because it made sense decades ago. We need to see if things still make sense.
Thank you very much. Danielle Skidmore, you're gonna be up next, if you want to get in line behind someone, that would be great. Ms. Cook, why don't you go ahead and start? You have two minutes.
My name is Sarah Cook, and I am here as a co-president of the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association to reiterate to you all tonight the content of HPNA's March, March fourth letter, in which we encouraged continued involvement of neighborhood associations and contact teams in the city's redesign of the land development code. In that letter, we described how we feel that our neighborhood's efforts show that growth, including the gentle density described by Councilmember Harper-Madison earlier, can be supported by existing tools such as the NCCDs, and invited you to visit with us. That invitation still stands. But tonight, I also want to take the opportunity to urge you, and all of us, to reject the false dichotomy presented between neighborhoods and other interests. Some have presented here, tonight, or online, and at other times. If you want to see the ten new urbanist principles embodied, come visit Hyde Park and read our NCCDs. Specific examples include the NCCDs provisions, which encourage principles like walkability, quality architecture in urban design, smart transportation, and as good an example of mixed-use and mixed housing as you'll find outside of downtown, not to mention missing middle housing. Also, I think you can walk through Hyde Park and see some measure of Yimbyism in action. Throughout our neighborhood, people have and are continuing to construct second units in their backyards, and several single-family homes have recently been developed into two-unit structures. People in Hyde Park are often saying yes in my backyard. My co-president, from whom you will hear later, and I, commit that we will make time with you, your staff, and others to come see what I briefly described here, and discuss our efforts to include affordable units and new developments, and to provide for increased density. But at the very least, as a citizen, I urge you to reconsider and possibly reject the notions that were going to be pitted against each other. As you define the land development code process moving forward, don't forget the Yimby neighbors in Hyde Park just up the street who are eager to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Betsy Klubine speaks, is Caroline Bailey here? Yes? Why don't you come on up to this podium here? Ms. Klubine? Uh-huh?
Sure. Um, I'm Betsy Klubine, and I have lived in the Hyde Park area for twenty years, first as a renter and now as a homeowner. And I'm currently co-president with Sarah of the Neighborhood Association. Um, I don't have much time, so I just want to say, as you're considering what to do with the F-25 zoning, I would like you to consider maintaining the NCCDs in the new land development code. Uh, the NCCD in Hyde Park protects over forty-five apartment complexes in the neighborhood along with the diverse housing stock, a commercial district, and, and allows for a lot of additional density that has not been fully developed at this time. We are interested in conversations about increasing middle, the middle, missing middle housing across the city, something that our neighborhood is, was actually recognized for by the Opticos group. And we're also interested in talking with you about ways to provide for additional affordability in our neighborhood, especially as the existing housing stock is redeveloped and becomes more expensive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before Alicia Weigl speaks, is Liz Warner here? Why don't you come on down? You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone, I'm Alicia. I'm a resident of District Nine, and I moved there intentionally because I did not want to be part of the gentrification and the displacement that I see over on the east side of town. I have a lot of friends of color, a lot of friends that have lived in those communities for a long time. But I have to tell you that for a twenty-eight-year-old like me, it was nearly impossible to find an affordable option in District Nine. Um, and the only reason that I was able to actually find a place is because I recently got a new job that pays a lot better than running local city council races did. But I found my place, and it's right up South First, it's just up the hill from Whataburger, which is awesome, because we all love a good Patty melt, right? At least I do. Coming back from the bars, it's especially good. But in addition to being able to walk to food, which is really awesome, I love my community because it's a great multifamily housing community. I live really close to my neighbors, the unit next door to me is an elderly couple, Patty and Joe. And they'll take my mail in for me when I'm traveling for work, or I'll walk their dog from them when Joe's having trouble walking, because he has a bad hip. And as a survivor of sexual assault, I really like sharing walls with my neighbors, because it makes me feel safe, like, I know who's around me, and I'm not surrounded by like, a bunch of, you know, empty lot, which, who knows who's lurking out there, so it works really, really well for me. Super into the fact that it's really a community, and a compact and connected community, and that's what multifamily housing is. And that's what the character of my neighborhood is. And I really love my community, like I said, so I wanted to get more involved. So I recently started attending Bolden Creek Neighborhood Association meetings. And frankly, I was really distressed to see that there were only two other people that were around my age. I would say like ninety percent of the association was white, wealthy, and over the age of like fifty-five or sixty. And the needs of those people, whose voices are being represented in these neighborhood plans, and overwhelmingly in these neighborhood associations, are not youth like me, and certainly not youth of color. And again, I'm an owner, because I was able to get this better job and put down a down payment, which I'm super proud of, even though it's just a little tiny one-bedroom condo, I'm very proud of it. But the people that live next door to me in Timber Creek, for example, they're not coming to these neighborhood association meetings. And the people living at the Willows, and all the other, the renters in our community, their voices aren't being heard. And frankly, the people whose voices are being heard are not gonna be around to see the effects of not making room for more housing and density. They're not gonna be around for the effects of climate change and the mass displacement that that's gonna cause. They're not gonna be around when people like me are trying to start families and can't find one affordable option in central Austin, let alone in Austin City Limits. And frankly, I do a lot of work for this community, y'all see me a lot in a variety of capacities. And I don't think I should have to move to like Flugerville or Elgin, because the people in my Neighborhood Association are so up in arms about going a half-story up in terms of upzoning, rather than making room for younger people, people of color, and people that frankly just can't afford single-family homes. So, thanks for listening, please listen to the youth voices too, appreciate it. Appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Is Kevin McLaughlin here? Kevin McLaughlin, why don't you come on down? Ms. Skidmore, you have one minute.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Skidmore. I'm a resident of District 9. Thank you for the time, Mayor and Council. My time is short, so I just have three points for your consideration. With the recent approval of ASMP and Project Connect moving ahead full speed, I cannot stress important, stress enough the importance of meaningful density on our corridors, not only on the corridors, but near the corridors, not only on the future high-capacity transit corridors, but on all the high-frequency corridors. This density must come with reasonable compatibility standards that do not segregate among residential uses. Mandatory minimum parking requirements exacerbate our city's transportation challenges. The new code must follow the lead of truly progressive cities everywhere and eliminate them. We have other tools to manage our public right-of-way. Last point is about NCCDs. NCCDs. Any notion that these areas are untouchable in a code rewrite is antithetical to our city's goal of viewing each of our actions through a lens of equity. All of our neighborhoods are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Brian Potit here? Brian Potit? Why don't you come on down? And Caroline Bailey?
Hi. My name is Caroline Bailey. I live in District 9. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I am in favor of a new, better, and more progressive land use code. I believe that a land use code should promote affordability, sustainability, and opportunity for all. And I don't think our current land use code does that. We need to plan for an Austin 30-plus years from now. Every neighborhood, not just the corridors, should have every type of housing beside a single-family home. Because our city is not just comprised of traditional nuclear families. It's full of multi-generational families, of friends living together, of renters, of chosen families. We need to make possible all kinds of housing for all kinds of households, families, and peoples. ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes, all kinds of apartment communities, tiny houses, co-ops, nursing homes, group homes, et cetera. We need to make major changes if we want to fight climate change and support the ASMP and the Strategic Housing Blueprint and Project Connect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Eric Wise here? Why don't you come on down? Liz Warner?
Hi. My name is Liz Warner. I live in District 9, and I am in favor of reforming the land use code to make Austin more affordable and sustainable. I'm a recent graduate of UT, and while at UT, I lived in the chaos that is West Campus. While I won't speak to the affordability of housing or to the availability of grocery stores, I can speak to how much I love to live in such a vibrant, connected community. It was walkable, bustling with life, and had an abundance of housing to accommodate the thousands of students who came together to make a community. However, after graduation, my friends and I all moved to different parts of Austin. Though we live miles away from each other, it feels like we've moved to completely different cities. Due to affordability issues, many have had to move to the outskirts of the city where they can't walk anywhere except to the condo development down the road. Inticiously planned get-togethers are the only way we get to spend time with each other. The drastic difference between these two Austins shows that there's ample room for improvement for our land use code that includes adding abundant middle housing and improving the connectivity of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Crowley, why don't you come on down? Kevin McLaughlin?
I'd just like to say what a pleasure it is to look at this city council as you begin to rewrite the land development code. People move to Austin for the opportunity that it provides. They move here to get jobs, to start families, but I want to talk about a different kind of opportunity. And that is the opportunity that the 11 of you have, to allow missing middle housing by right everywhere in Austin. Not just ADUs, but fourplexes, townhomes, rowhomes, everywhere in Austin. That's the kind of housing we need. And that opportunity is why I'm so excited to look at this city council. You all know you have to make the changes to both our land development code and the on-the-ground mapping this year. Because if you don't, this chance may never return again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Sarah Simpson here? Sarah Simpson, why don't you come on down and get in line? Brian Potit?
Hi. My name is Brian Potit, and I'm here to speak in favor of eliminating parking requirements, single-family zoning, and NCCDs citywide. You all agree that we face an existential environmental crisis, but some of your positions simply do not reflect that. During the work session this week, there seemed to be consensus for eliminating parking requirements on transit corridors, but nowhere else. This is a half-measure. Parking requirements increase housing costs and subsidize driving regardless of the location. In what context should we ensure more affordable housing can't be built? In what context should we subsidize cars? Hyde Park, Allendale? I don't think there are any contexts in which we should be doing that. If you prefer to prioritize the enrichment of current homeowners at the expense of affordability and the climate, at least be straightforward about it. Otherwise, please follow the recommendations from the numerous environmental and housing organizations calling for elimination of parking minimums and legalization of missing middle citywide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Andrew Lambden Abraham here? Andrew Lambden Abraham? Why don't you come on down and get in line? Eric Wise?
I am Eric Wise. I'm a fourth-year undergraduate at University of Texas. I think we, it's a general agreement that we all appreciate our time and our choices. Allowing people to have a choice where they live, a choice how they travel, can be achieved through a more dense, more mixed-use area. Being able to walk somewhere as opposed to drive somewhere can be quicker, can be faster, gives them more time to spend at city council meetings, reading a book, watching TV, whatever they want. And this can be achieved through, this density and mixed use can be achieved through townhouses, fourplexes, sixplexes, AUDs, everything we've been talking about tonight. And I think it's just a great opportunity in this upcoming months, or maybe faster than that, who knows, to make this change in Austin. That would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Dan Keshet here? Is Dan here? Why don't you come on down? You're getting in line. Ryan Crowley?
Hi. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I currently live at Touse Cooperative in District 9. We're part of the College Houses system of cooperatives, and I really want to speak again in favor, like Ryan nailed it earlier, about increasing the availability of cooperatives in the city. I think we're all very proud of the reputation Austin has as a progressive city. I think that this is actually an area where we can really do a lot more work to improve even on that reputation and have real action. Councilman Kesar and I was very fortunate to meet you several years ago at an ice cream social we had at 21st Street. Cooperatives are really amazing because the members who are living there have the democratic control over their actions and over their housing. It's really all of, a lot of our principles in real action. I think it's especially great if we, it's a great option for how we can look to increase density, and yet without this fear that many people have of it leading to harm for current residents, because the people living in the cooperative, we are the people in control of our cooperative, rather than, and the money that we spend in the cooperative, it stays in our community, we are our community. It also leads to a lot more democracy, and I think it's a great option. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Megan Meisenbach here? Why don't you come on down? And Sarah Simpson will speak.
Hi. My name is Sarah Simpson. I live in District 9. I'm here this evening to talk about planning disasters, specifically the one we've been living in months for the better part of a century, but have done nothing about, and that is parking requirements. In Donald Schupps' book, The High Cost of Free Parking, planning disasters are described as a process that cost a lot of money and has gone extremely wrong. Urban renewal and public housing, high-rise public housing are classic examples, but few people recognize parking requirements as a disaster because the costs are hidden and the harm is diffused. However, in Donald Schupps' words, parking requirements cause great harm. They subsidize cars, distort transportation choices, increase housing costs, burden low-income households, damage the economy, degrade the environment. Parking requirements also cost a lot of money, although this cost is hidden in higher prices for everything except parking itself. Off-street parking requirements thus have all the hallmarks of a great planning disaster. We need to start acknowledging that. So what do we do about it? Reject the pseudoscience that is 20th-century parking planning and remove parking minimums across the city, not just downtown. Require and incentivize the unbundling of parking costs from housing and community costs. The land development code rewrite depends on it, as does the Austin Strategic Mobility Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Linda Cangelosi here? Why don't you come on down, Linda? And speaking now is Andrew Lambden Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I was born in Austin. I've lived here all my life. My wife was not born in Austin. She moved here, and I made my life amazingly better. And I think that many other people would benefit from moving to Austin and enjoying the welcomeness and acceptance that the city is known for. When we first moved in together, we were living in smaller, now older apartment buildings that were affordable and are no longer in the areas that they are allowed to be built. You couldn't build a new one there. And it made it much easier. When we went to buy a house, we wanted a townhouse that was like the right scale for us, but there were none available. And the only opportunity we could see to live in the, you know, areas that would give us the minimum carbon impact was missing middle like that, where we could share the land with other owners to the location. And we would like that everywhere.
Thank you very much. Is Thomas Ates here? Thomas Ates? A-T-E-S? Why don't you come on down and get in line? In the meantime, Dan Keshet?
All right. I am here today to talk also, as many others did, about how important it is to have the option of missing middle everywhere. Your very first speaker talked about that housing economics is more complicated than just how many units. It's not just 135,000 units, 145,000 units. It matters what kind of units we allow. I only have a minute, so I'm not going to go into it too deep, but low-rise housing is the least expensive type of housing to build, just construction costs, not land. Mid-rise is more expensive, high-rise is more expensive than that. Land in the central city is the most expensive land we have. Land along the periphery is the least expensive. When we don't allow the land to be divided up in the central city, then we're saying either you can build an expensive kind of housing, mid-rise, high-rise, or you can have expensive land, 450,000. There is no cheap option. Right now, we are incentivizing demolition of the Hill Country, the only place that you can have a cheap construction type and cheap land.
Thank you. Is Mike White here? Mr. White? You'll be up in line, please. Ms. Meisenbach?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for listening to the people tonight. I wanted to touch on something Ms. Moffett was talking about, what the city demographer identified as the need for, the 10-year need for the area, the five-county area, is 135,000 units. That's not just for Austin. At its current build rate, the Austin region is already greatly surpassing this target. And the manager, city manager's memo says that the city of Austin, under our current zoning, has the capacity for 145,000 additional units. So of these 135,000 units for the five-county region, 60,000 needs to be truly affordable. Also, I noticed the MFI is based on HUD figures, which is also for Travis County and not for Austin. So it seems like perhaps a visit from the city demographer could clear up some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Jared Brackenridge here? Either one. Either one. Is Jared Brackenridge here? Okay. He'll be up next. Ms. Cangelosi, you have a minute.
Good evening. Sorry. I'm Linda Cangelosi. I live in Old West Austin, District 9. I'm 67 years old, and I've lived in Austin for 50 years. It was a sweet little town in 1969. And again, in the '70s, I was Imeloulin's council aide, and looking at the development problems we dealt with back then, it seems really quaint. But Austin was pushing up towards 300,000 in population, and we thought, oh, it's ruined. In the '80s, I was raising three children when the land development code was passed, the current land development code. Just as my children grew up, the land development code needs to grow up and change completely. You can't pretend to be concerned about climate change if you're going to continue to push people to the periphery and beyond. I went to Houston one weekday morning early. I saw headlights coming from Bastrop at 7:30 in the morning. It was just appalling. We need to provide missing middle, abundant housing
Thank you.
for all the
Thank you. Is Gerald Balaka here? Why don't you come on down? Mr. Ates, you have one minute.
I think there's been a mix-up.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Ates?
Yes, yes.
You're up next, I think? And you have one minute.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All righty. My name is Thomas Ates, and I live in District 9. And I guess I grew up in Cincinnati, and Cincinnati is a town that, well, my mom's family's from there, so I blame it on my mom, you know, basically how Cincinnati is. We tend not to hide our emotions. We tend to be really forceful about what we say. My dad's family is from here in Austin, and basically I had to learn my southern matters, manners, you know, from my grandma and everybody. But I've been really grateful to be able to stay here, stay here longer than I thought that I could, to be honest. I've really lucked out and found some really wonderful people to be able to stay where I'm at. I live in the ADU, and I've been able to see just how great missing middle can be. It gives me, you know, it gives me a life. I'm able to have my house, yard, everything. Please don't take that away from Austinitans. Make sure that missing middle can be an option for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mike White?
Hello. My name is Mike White. I am a homeowner in the Brentwood neighborhood.
You're up next.
And currently work for a nonprofit housing organization. Housing has become out of reach for many in this city. I was lucky to buy a home in this city five years ago, even though it was an extreme stretch. But today, my fellow millennial friends and entire generation are feeling restricted in purchasing a home in areas where jobs have been created. I recognize there are many people who have lived in Austin who don't want to see any change, but we must ensure all future generations are able to participate in the purchase of a home. In order to do so, we must allow for more housing through efficient land use. We need our land to accommodate mixed housing sizes, mixed incomes, and mixed uses in our city, even within the finer fabric of our neighborhoods. We need townhomes, rowhomes, fourplexes, and sixplexes allowed on all city lots. We need apartment homes over retail or commercial, even on secondary arterials in single-family neighborhoods. We should have the ability to walk within our communities to meet our daily needs. We should not give away potential homes to part-time storage space for cars, and we need to do all this while protecting our open space and water.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brackenridge, you have a minute.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jared Brackenridge. I am an Austinite, grew up here, been in the past 20, 20-plus years, whatnot, right? I grew up here on the east side of Austin. However, my family, like many others, have been displaced. As you can tell, many of us that have been displaced are not in this space right now, which is a problem, because you guys are getting to hear the responses of how we should develop our land from other people that have just moved here, things like that. No, we need to worry about the people that were here originally, and we need to create a plan on how we're gonna bring affordable, and y'all use that term so flexible, stop using it flexible. When we say affordable, we mean actually affordable for new college students that have just graduated from Houston, where I'm currently attending. When we graduate, where are we gonna go? We would love to stay here in Austin. You guys don't have enough black people here in the city of Austin, but I guess there's no plan on allowing us to stay here. But I hope that you guys have a changed heart, that you guys can actually make that possible. My brown sisters as well and brothers, they would love to stay here, and I'm gonna let y'all have your time back, but please keep that on your mind. Affordable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gerald Balaka? Gerald Balaka, you are our last speaker.
My name is Gerald Balaka and I live in Breiker Woods, District 10. And I'm very concerned that you have not studied the issue about removing parking restrictions enough because our streets are just not wide enough to have them park, have cars parked on both sides of the street and still have two-way traffic. And I've traveled to a lot of cities that have put in apartments and fourplexes and whatever in neighborhoods, but they require parking and they have wider streets and our streets are just not wide enough. And, I mean, it's just gonna become gridlocked when a two-way street becomes one-way. And so I really need, I think we really need to study this more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everybody for coming in and speaking to us tonight. That gets us, all the speakers we had signed up. Colleagues, just to reiterate our earlier conversation, this conversation is going to continue among us on the bulletin board. To help throw that off, we were asked to try to take the sentiment that was expressed on Tuesday. We're gonna post a document tomorrow that people can then react to and perhaps use as a point of departure over the following 10 days. The next time that we will discuss it again will be at our next work session meeting, which is on April 23rd. We're gonna put it on the agenda for April 23rd. We're also gonna put it on the agenda for April 25th and allow us the opportunity to be able to vote a resolution, should we wish to do so, on the 25th. There seemed to be some desire to at least have that opportunity available when we spoke last Tuesday. So to that end, any comments or discussions on this while we're here? Yes, Councilmember Kitchen.
No comments. I just want to clarify. So I think we should also clarify for the public that they can continue to come and comment on the dates that you mentioned. So I just wanted to clarify that. In other words, today is not the last day for people to come.
No, I would urge people to contact our offices as we go. Not only that, I would also urge people on the 25th, that would be set for an opportunity. And then I would also point out that if we're able to answer the five questions that the managers asked us to answer and should the manager then take those answers in the direction and come back with a staff proposal, that itself will initiate a rigorous and open community conversation as it works through the board and commission process before we then get back to council again. So there are gonna be multiple opportunities. Unless anybody has something else? Yes.
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming and what I've learned in many of these public hearings about this issue is everybody is really saying the same thing, that we just want to live in this great city regardless if we were born here or knew here and be able to walk to things and be able to enjoy our community. And that's, it's just so unfortunate how this often becomes so divisive because I heard everybody say really the same thing. And I hope as we move forward in this, regardless of what side we think we're on here, that we all know that we're all just really wanting the best for our community and that is really all of our, that's the thing we have in common with our motivation is we just really want the best for our community and that's what, you know, that's what each one of us up here will have disagreements, but I'm looking forward to the continued process to change, to change what I think needs to be changed.
Okay, Councilmember Kitchen.
I would echo that. I think a number of people said that at the work session and Mayor Protem, thank you for pointing that out. I think that's, I think that's really important. And I would just like to add that sometimes we are tempted to think in terms of trade-offs where there actually aren't trade-offs, that actually we can think in terms of a broader picture. So for example, sometimes it's tempting to think of affordability versus density and that's really not what we're talking about here. We're talking about both. So, and we need both. So I think as we continue the conversation, let's just think in terms of all working together. And it's gonna take all of us to really think through how we can get done what we're saying we won't want to get done. And it's not an easy task. And so I just look forward to the continued conversation.
Anybody else?
Mayor.
Yes?
And you know, where I live at, near in East Austin, right off of Holly Street, there's, my backyard, there's a 160-foot building there. It's called Rebecca Bain and it's senior housing. And, you know, I have, I don't even notice it. You know, that's the way, you know, in my neighborhood, we have fourplexes. There are long Lambie Street there, there are four houses on one lot. We, East Austin used to have all these little small fourplex, eightplex. That's the way they built back then. And unfortunately, a lot of these houses became old and they got demolished and the rezoning changed everything back to single-family three. And so, you know, we need to really start focusing on looking at all of our land and make sure that we plant it right so that we can have all kinds and all forms of housing. Because it's getting to that point now that we're saving the neighborhood, but the houses are selling for a million dollars. You know, this is what happened when we did the historic district there on Willow Street, from Frontish Road at 35 to Waller. You know, we decided that we were gonna make that into a historic district. And sure enough, people get all afraid that they're gonna lose value on their property, but they're selling for a million dollars now. And that's my neighborhood. I paid 21,000. I could have bought a big mansion there with two servant houses for 49,000, 39 years ago. And we thought it was just too much. So I just ask and plead people that, you know, don't be afraid. You know, I have, we were the first neighborhood that opted in for AUDs. You know, the neighborhood council fought us and fought us and fought us and we prevail at the city council level. So I just want to let people know that, you know, Austin is growing. It always has grown. I was born here, you know, and it's gonna continue to grow. And we always make it real hard on ourselves because we say no, 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 and they still come. And they're willing to open up their wallets and pay a lot more for your piece of land, you know. And that's when the appraisal district sees that they buying your land and giving you $500,000 and they tear the house down and build two more units there and sell them for 750, I tell you what, your land value is gonna go up. My land value now is $300,000 and we haven't got the appraisal for this year yet and I'm afraid that it's gonna even go up higher. I mean, that's without a house. So we really need to do something. We're desperate. We don't want to be moved out, we don't want to move out. But we, and we know that we need a more affordable unit. I have advocated, you know, building density and more apartments for the last 15 years, ever since I was able to get Eddie Rodriguez to help me out on the homestead preservation. You know, because we knew that we needed more density in order to keep our workforce housing there in my neighborhood. So that's what I look at. Can we continue to live, go over a path that we're doing now and just have no low-income people living in East Austin?
Mayor, if I may, briefly.
Go ahead.
I'd like to echo my colleagues and one other thing I'd like to add to the commentary, and this has been helpful for me and I encourage other people to try it. Land use isn't my background or my specialty, so for me, a lot of it is anecdotal and it just makes sense. When you're moving through the world and you're having conversations with folks about land use, if you happen to be one of these woks that speaks land use in your sleep, don't be patronizing. It doesn't further the cause. I'd also like to say it benefits us all to move with civility and respect. That's also very helpful, including like the young lady from Hyde Park. I'd love to come and visit. I didn't get your email, so I'm gonna take a look and I'd love to come and visit. But that to say, you refer to yourself as a Yimby or a Nimby. And I heard Yimby and why, I think we should really all make a concerted effort to stop calling each other names. I also think it would be very beneficial for us to try to see, like Mayor Protem said, where we have something in common and try to move from that place. I think it inherently makes the conversation much more civil and much more productive. And thank you guys again for everybody coming out and being so patient and sticking around for so long. Have a good night.
And with that, we're gonna get this done. 9:42, this meeting is adjourned.